I'd like to call meeting number forty-nine of the county commissioners' order. Would everyone please stand for the bunch of leaders?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome. Merry Christmas. Okay, thank you everybody for being here on a cold day. Pat, we're glad you're here, Pat, because we're gonna tie you up before the meeting's over.
Got it.
We're gonna check street by street to make sure there's no snow left on any of the roads in Mahoney County.
I saw you on TV this morning, so...
Yeah, early.
Well, I was at five, but I could see that.
Pat, you should've just stayed up from the Christmas party last night.
I could have.
I mean, it's 5:00 AM. Gotta make sure you're in bed. That's great.
He went home, rolled over, took a coffee, got back up again.
That's crazy. Those reporters, those media people, they screw up all the time.
They do.
Well, they have to be up, we have to be up.
We have to be up to tell you to stay home. We never make it, Glenn, if we don't stay. That'd be hard to do.
Well, before we get the meeting started, you know, we wanted to acknowledge and recognize a person who's been working with the county for a long time. It's our lawn council, Pam Hanover. She's here at the meeting, and she's retiring. She's retiring young, she's not near as old as Carol, but... We never leave Carol alone. So...
Should I kill him now? You want to say I'm gonna leave her?
As long as we get it on video.
We wanted to give her the biggest time in the country. So, go ahead, Carol.
Pam, I am so excited that you got...
No.
No, we're gonna like get off of... You wanna come up to them? Yeah, oh, come over here. You know, it's so important that you have good lawn council, and you've served Mahoney County with the utmost courtesy of Mahoney County professionalism, always helping us do the right thing, and of course, sometimes, you know, that might be difficult because we're always trying to figure out how we could do things, and you're always there to make sure we're on the right path. It's gonna be hard losing you, but I know you're gonna retire. I always says, you know, there's always an open door to come back. So, God bless you. God bless you. And you know it's girl power, because we're all in red.
That's right.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Pam, I just wanna congratulate you. We're gonna miss you. I've known you a long time, I've been here quite a while, and all I can say is, I feel smart when I'm around Pam, because she gives us all these papers that we have to sign, and I pretend I know what's half in there, and I really don't, but her trust and her integrity and her knowledge over the years have totally benefited me and benefited this county, this community, and I can't thank you enough, and I wish you all the best in your endeavors. But I miss you. Thank you for everything.
No, I said it, I just... Just remember, the door's always open. We can always move them over, bring you back.
Thank you, Pam. I've got a chance to work with you for five years, you know, and you've been amazing. You know, it's all, we always know things are gonna happen. You know, it's one, you know, really checkmark of assurance for everything, you know, you know your business and you take good care of us, making sure that we do this right, so we thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
Pam gets an opportunity now to go and take care of her grandkids, so it's a nice part. It's something that we all look forward to. I don't have any grandkids, I just wanna go home and take care of my car. She knows, I wanna lock myself in the garage. Glenn knows for about, you know, a week, just hang out, latch my car, just clean my garage, put things in order.
She'll food it over the door, or is that how that's gonna work?
I've got a little fridge in there.
Oh.
You know, it's all good. All right, we'll move on to public comments. If anyone has anything they'd like to say. Dad, we asked you.
Are you talking about it now, but that's the last thing, only thing that you're talking about?
Okay, seeing now we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of board meeting number forty-eight, Thursday, December seventh, two thousand seventeen, approval of bills for payment. Motion.
So moved?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Middoogee, are we getting it?
Yes.
Commissioner Tappertan.
Yes.
General entries.
Motion approved, general entry number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Middoogee, are we getting it?
Yes.
Commissioner Tappertan.
Yes.
Commissioner Jepson.
Yes. Travels. Travels, building inspection.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nancy. This is our travel for two thousand eighteen, continuing education, conference meetings and such throughout the state. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Convention visitors.
Good morning. This is also our blanket travel for two thousand eighteen to meetings, conferences, seminars, trade shows, travel shows, our association meetings, Virgil, Tara, and my son.
Yeah, Mary.
Good morning, Commissioners, this is for travel for two thousand eighteen throughout the state.
Human resources, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nancy. This is a resolution for travel and training seminars, conferences, et cetera, for our risk manager, Kathy Jones, and it is non-general. Thank you.
O M B Grants.
Good morning, Commissioners. This also is a blanket travel for two thousand eighteen.
Thanks, Anna. Travels.
Motion.
Motion approved travels, letters A through E.
Second.
Commissioner Middoogee, are we getting it? Yes. Commissioner Tappertan.
Yes.
Yes. Agreements, building inspection.
Commissioners, this is our annual meeting for a copier, includes maintenance and the cost of prints. Thank you.
Okay, courts.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nancy. This is a request for an agreement with R G J, R J G, excuse me, Industries, better known as Two Men and a Truck. These folks are going to reload, or relocate the contents of the currency report to the new currency report, and that's an amount of eighteen twelve fifty, and those are general funds.
We thought that was Pat and Bill. All right. Convention visitors.
Letter C, this is the time of year we start lining up all our advertisements for two thousand eighteen, so letter C is an agreement for the Columbus, Ohio area two thousand eighteen best driving vacations advertisement. Letter D is a bigger agreement for our advertising with the Rust Belt Challenge Volleyball Tournament, which started last year and is coming back this year. They have a multi-year agreement to return to the area, so that's great. And letter E is an agreement for one of our literature distribution companies. She represents us at ten travel shows throughout the year, as well as the Ohio State Fair, so we give her presents there.
I was driving home from Pennsylvania yesterday, and I saw the billboard, Youngstown. All right, engineers.
Morning, everybody. Letter F is an agreement with Diversified Comfort Services to repair our boiler at the main office. That went out about two months ago. Letter G is an agreement with Southeastern Equipment for repairs to one of our vehicles, and letter H is an agreement with Hill International for repairs to a different vehicle. All three are non-general.
O M B Grants.
Commissioners, this is a pass-through grant from the Department of Labor and Corrections through the County Commissioners Office to the Community Corrections Association on Market Street, and this is an investment, or a justice reinvestment and incentive funding for those persons out in the city.
Senator.
Hi, yes, good morning, Commissioner. J is an agreement with the local water technologies. This is a company that provides water service to the treatment plants to ensure that there's no contaminants in the system that is used for the testing of the samples that we do for wastewater treatment. It's a two-year agreement. K is an agreement with the biowide science, a similar type of process. They provide the ability for us to demonstrate that we are able to discharge, our discharge into the creeks and streams will support aquatic life that is consistent with that particular area. Again, it's a two-year agreement. L is an agreement with, or amendment to the agreement with Burgess and Nyphle. Burgess and Nyphle provided the financial feasibility report that was used for the recent revenue bond. Additional work was needed, additional information was needed to add to the report in order to meet the requirements of the viewing agency. And M is an agreement with operator training committee, and that is to provide coursework related to operators maintaining their certification.
Thanks, Bill. Motion to approve agreements.
Motion to approve agreements, number A through N.
Second.
Commissioner Middoogee, are we getting it?
Yes.
Commissioner Tappertan.
Yes.
Commissioner Jepson.
Yes. Appointments. Commissioners, reappoint the following individuals who serve on Mahoney County Convention and Visitors Bureau, effective January one, two thousand eighteen, for a two-year term, Mr. Mike McGiffin. Commissioners, reappoint the following individuals who serve on Mahoney County Claggett Commission, effective January one, two thousand eighteen, for three years, Richard Dowell, Attorney Mark Fortunato, Gary Ososki. Commissioners, appoint the following individuals who serve on Western Reserve Transit Authority for an unexpired term, for the unexpired term of retiring Mr. John Jackebak until December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, that's Ted Leida. Commissioners, reappoint the following individuals who serve on Western Reserve Transit Authority, effective January one, two thousand eighteen, for a three-year term, John P. Brown. Motion to approve appointments.
Motion to approve appointments, A through D.
Commissioner Middoogee, are we getting it?
Yes.
Commissioner Tappertan.
Yes.
Commissioner Jepson.
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Commissioner Middoogee, are we getting it?
Yes.
Commissioner Tappertan.
Yes.
Commissioner Jepson.
Resolution of awards, Senator.
Hi, yes, Commissioners, this is a recommendation from the department to award the contract for phase two of the Pollen Woods sewer improvement to J S Bova. The contract came in under the engineers, significantly under the engineers' estimate. There were eight bids, and all of the bids were under the engineers' estimates. We've got really good pricing on this project. It's partially funded by OPW State.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Motion to approve resolution awards.
Motion to approve resolution awards, two A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Middoogee, are we getting it?
Yes.
Commissioner Tappertan.
Yes.
Commissioner Jepson.
Yes. Resolutions. Commissioners, resolution approving the legal holiday schedule for two thousand eighteen, and resolution to extend the time of the annexation petition, request of eighteen point eight three acres in Campito Township until January eleventh, two thousand eighteen. See, Commissioners, O M B.
Commissioners, this is a resolution to transfer from the Medicaid Sales Tax Transition Fund, funds that state given to County, to the Criminal Administrative Justice Fund, this is for six hundred thousand. This would've been the amount that the fund would have lost this year, or did this this year, so that is due to the replacement of it. The fund is doing good, I think we'll be able to have it as a carryover, but I want to keep the revenue alive with that, so that's what that's done. Item D is a resolution approving the operating maintenance agreement for Children's Services Board with the Youngstown Central Area Community Improvement Corporation. They do the operating maintenance of that building for the County, and it's a five-year agreement.
Thanks. Engineers.
Commissioners, letter E is a resolution necessary to purchase a tandem axle truck and three single axle trucks from Truck Specialists Incorporated through the state co-op purchasing program, the amount of three hundred forty-nine thousand twenty dollars.
Thanks, Pam. Senator.
Hi, yes, Commissioners, this is a request for a moral obligation payment. The department, through an oversight, failed to process the purchase order in a timely manner to make the payment for services.
I can't believe that.
It's a good thing there's a lot of many here to hear this.
I can't believe your office did anything that didn't put it in place.
Especially Pam's here, it's pay for Pam, and she may wanna re-review our whole thing, so... But this doesn't happen often, Pam, so... But we do, so this is to authorize the payment of this invoice. Thanks, Bill.
Jeff Green, you have some good news that...
Yeah, this is really good news. This is resolution A, this is a resolution approving an addendum to Mahoney County Sheriff's Office employees, their contract, adding a section to the leave act that's in their contract. What it essentially is doing is, it's permitting and giving any employee with the sheriff's office up to two hundred and forty hours paid leave if they donate a kidney or part of liver to any other individual. In this case, we just had this take place. You know, with all the negative things that have been going around this year and all of this, this is probably one of the most positive things I've ever seen. This is one deputy sheriff, Marcelo Walters, giving a kidney to John Marankovic. The operation took place eighty-four yesterday. Believe it or not, Marcelo went home. They're doing great, everything's working, if it could've gone better. And I just have to say this, as far as law enforcement goes, you know, we do a lot of things that are dangerous. We do a lot of things that, you know, people put their lives in arms' way, but this is really truly an act of selflessness, bravery. I'm just so honored to be a part of her career and to work with her at the sheriff's office and also John Marankovic. I can't thank the three of you enough from the bottom of my heart. You guys never hesitated for one second. You immediately were okay with opening this contract up and adding this addendum to it, which just makes, it just shows that you're taking care of your own, and I just think it's really something. We didn't reinvent the wheel, this was something that was actual state law, for state employees to cover them. We really just mirrored that, you know, prosecutor's office helped us there, and I just can't thank you enough. This is really just something special when, you know, they're not even family members, they're brothers and sisters through law enforcement, so this is just really a great thing this time of year, and I can't thank them enough, and thank the three of you.
Sheriff, I think that it encompasses all transplants, right? Not just selected things, I think...
Well, you can only give so many things while you're still alive.
Well, you know what, because I'm, you know, no one, no one has done this arena more than Pat Genet has, you know, and, you know, with the bone marrow transplant, you know, and things of that nature.
Well, ironically, we have to look at that, because I'm not sure if we even, we did this in such haste, because their surgery was coming up right away. I know the state law does have bone marrow in there for seven days for a donor of bone marrow. I don't know if we covered that or not, but at this point, it's covered for up to two hundred and forty hours for the donor to get time to recoup, and I think that's, that's the average, is five to six weeks, but my God, how brave, how brave of her to do this, and...
Her to act...
It's incredible, it's incredible.
It's hard to, I mean...
It's hard to cooperate, huh? And, you know, we all would look back at, you know, at a sibling, or maybe your mom, or a child to donate, but when it's a coworker, and, you know, there's a bond there, and they'll, they'll forever have a bond, and so far, so good, you know, everything's going great, so...
And Sheriff, if you could speak to how once a donor was to have the exact match within your department?
Yeah, I don't know the odds, but it's very, it's very, very difficult to find a match for something like that. All donors are generally on a list for quite some time trying to find a perfect match, and this deputy of ours, Marcelo, just was adamant about getting tested, and then there's a lot of things that go into that, even if you are a match, you know, high blood pressure, your health, you know, all of that, and, you know, just, it was just a, just a perfect match, so it's just one of the coolest things I've seen so far, you know, in my career, you know, it's just really neat, so...
Hopefully, this will resonate, because, you know, I'll tell you who, a big supporter of all of this, of course, is God rest his soul, Dr. Or. He would sit in this meeting and want, I mean, I know this is different from that to a degree, but like then, he wanted death to be in Mahoney County. You know, we haven't really taken it off the page yet, but that's what he wanted here, so our county, Columbiana and Trumbull, would have access to organs that, through deaths that we could, our people could stay alive with. But to do this, and know that you have only one kidney left, I mean, I don't know if anybody has ever had kidney disease in their family, I have, but when you have one kidney left and something happens, that's a tough field, and God bless her for that.
What was really neat about this, and I don't wanna violate HIPAA, but they told me this, and I'm sure they're, they're fine with this, but they were able to tell right away that the kidney, right after they put it in there, was working right away, and they could just tell by the blood test, and I don't know how much, you know, it can instantly start cleaning the blood and all of that, but it was, it was almost instantaneous, so that's just, it's incredible.
It's just amazing that they have the ability to transfer that, and they do. I mean, he made that forty-eight hour mark.
Yeah, that was in Pittsburgh, UPMC.
Thank you, thank you, Sheriff.
Excellent. Motion to approve resolutions, A through G.
Second.
Commissioner Middoogee, are we getting it?
Yes.
Commissioner Tappertan.
Yes.
I don't think we get better, good in the order than that one, so, you know. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Audrey.
I do. I wanted to say something for Pam, too. I, and behalf of, I know, she's not gonna get up and say anything, or Nancy, but I just wanna say that she has worked so well with the two, the three of us, providing Nancy all the resolutions, everything, and she needs to be right on time, where Stacy and I, we can call Pam up in a second, and she always answers her phone, and so it's been such a help and such an extension of the Commissioner's office, the Aldery's office, you know, that we have that support there, and for the savings that this county has generated over the last couple of years with our refundings and everything. Pam would go, and Bill will tell you, too, just going all to that detail to make sure that it stands and it's justified by everything, so I just am very, very appreciative of all of that and what was done.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Audrey.
We all have sort of red on, so there's that girl power.
I know, we're gonna take a girl power picture.
Just wanted to tell these guys that.
Only one condition, Nancy better be...
She is.
She is.
She is, we've got a red on.
She's got a red on. Oh, she's not, we're telling her she's gonna kill you.
You know what, Carol, Carol's, Carol's mean, or Carol's tough, but the only, the only woman in this room I'm afraid of is Nancy. She's as tough as it gets, let me tell you. When I said, "Come on, Nancy, take a picture with us," no. She's adamant, you know, she's...
Who Carter is?
Every now and then, we get, we get a picture, so... Buck?
Good morning.
How are you, Buck? Are you gonna sing some Carol for us or something?
Later, later. Just wanted to announce that the letters are going out today to the principals of the high schools in Mahoney County, from the offices of Commissioner, we're gonna have that graduation assistance program again this year. Last year, we helped about three hundred forty-one seniors up to a hundred and fifty dollars for their graduation fees. Came out to about, blew over thirty-three thousand dollars that we helped with last year, so we're gonna, letters and emails are going out again today, and we'll look forward to helping out some more of our graduating seniors.
That's all over Mahoney County?
Yes, all Mahoney County.
That's a great thing, they're not cutting that program, I think.
No, ma'am.
Anyone else? Pat?
Well...
Pat, you allowed this snow to happen on the day of our Christmas party. What's the deal?
I'm gonna try to stop it as quickly as I can. Now, just to expand on what, you know, Jerry brought up, what you brought up, you know, it's still difficult to talk about, but when somebody steps up and donates something to save someone's life, you know, thank you is just not enough, and they become part of your family, part of your life, and, you know, like I said, it's still hard to talk about, but Daniel, who donated to my wife, is still, he's part of our family, and they come up every year to visit us, and we go see them, and, you know, for what she did for, you know, Deputy Marankovic, like I said, it's just, speaks volumes of the type of person that she is, and for you guys to support that just shows the character of the three of you up there, and, you know, you can tell even Jerry had a hard time talking about it, this is, this is serious stuff that could affect any of us, and, you know, it's unfortunate sometimes that it takes an illness to realize that and to appreciate the things you have and the people that are around you, but when somebody steps up like that, like I said, thank you just isn't enough, and it's very touching to, to know the story, and, you know, it's just a great story, and, you know, I wish both of them the best, and...
That's an interesting thought of, because I have had the privilege of meeting Daniel and his family half dozen times.
Yeah, and they did it...
And it's just like...
Not knowing who she was, that was a... I'm-related donor, we weren't allowed to know till a year after, and same thing, you know, with my wife, the transplant was a success, it did take, she had issues with the medications associated with it, and that's what caused a lot of the problems, but the transplant worked, and it's incredible, the advances that have been made in medicine, and how much further they're going every year, and, you know, I had an uncle who had a kidney transplant in the seventies, his brother, my other uncle, gave him one, and he survived for, geez, almost fifty years after that.
Wow.
So, I mean, it was, it was incredible, that's, you know, that they were able to do that back in the seventies, and, you know, the advances that they've made in medicine, and it's key, you know, we're still trying to do stuff, would be to match to continue to educate people and make awareness, and, you know, kidney transplants, again, those are things that you hear about all the time, but until they hit home, you don't realize, you know, everything that's involved in it, so again, I just give kudos to, to her for doing that to save someone's life.
Thanks, Michelle.
And I'd like to mention that the boughles are really good this year. Pat's doing a good job with those so far.
Will you say that in spring?
Well, yeah, no, I'm waiting.
Did you wanna...
Yeah, I mean, that, the kidney thing, I have a grandson, and he's twenty, got kidney disease, and he's on dialysis, and he'll match so far, so, so I understand what the families and anyone's going through. However, less like cats, this is a fun thing. We're having an open house on Saturday from two to six at twenty-two seventeen Mahoney Avenue, near Calvary Cemetery, that place. We have our first park in the tattoo shop, by the way, if you see that one. And a thank you to the community, to our volunteers who support us, of all we could not make if we get no money from government or anything, it's from our people that come, and people who clean the place and take care of our cats and stuff. So you're invited to come, free food, and whole meatball sandwiches, by the way, Dave, and you don't have to eat for the butt. But, yeah, we welcome everybody, just come see us, even if you don't want a cat, and there's specials on the cats, by the way, for Christmas, and if you don't want one, see what we're like, just see how, how we run, how this place looks and everything, and, you know, our cats get better treatment than a lot of our kids in Youngstown.
Can I bring my three cats up and give them to you?
Heck, no. Only if you've got a big donation, we might consider it.
I wouldn't look like that, by the way, you know.
I know, mother... People will say they hate cats, come on, come see some of the cats. One, one nice gentleman, two young guys came, and he wanted a cat, his buddy has two cats. I said, "Go in there, your cat will find you." He comes out of one of the kit rooms with a cat on his head. He comes out of one of the kit rooms with a cat on his head. Chad walked over, walked up his leg, went on his head, he says, "I guess this is my cat." I said, "You got it." But thank you, stop to see us, and I'm serious, come have a sandwich with us and talk and come, come look at our shelter.
Thank you very much. And we also have to thank you, I know underneath that lid is an amazing, amazing cake, and we usually have to get a forklift, because they weigh ten pounds. She makes cakes, and they're like ten layers, and there's more icing and sugar and that thing, and...
I know, but it's Christmas.
That, that'd probably add twenty pounds on all of us, you know, so, but thank you so much, you're very kind.
You're welcome. I hope everybody has a good holiday, whatever holiday it is you choose out to, and a healthy New Year.
That's right.
That's it, healthy.
Healthy.
Carol.
Well, I just want to thank you again for the cake. I saw that when I walked in, I went, "Ah, Marie was baking." Thank you. Pam, thanks again for all your good work. I also want to thank Audrey and Carol and all of our, our people that are here, and Linda and Anna and Nancy, Stacy, and all the people that actually, um, and Jeff and Scott, all of our people that are here, Bill Coleman, that actually, Dennis, Jimmy, I don't want to miss anybody, they've worked with us and all do this again, and of course, Bob. I'm sorry, Bob, I was leaving you for last.
And Pat's worse, too.
Yeah, well, Pat's no issue, too. Oh, you, I'll take that, yours ours. Look at our ready schedule.
Okay.
We're getting towards the end of the year. We've come through one more year of success with everything we're doing, and that's a great thing. And our finances are level, and we did well on our sanitary, um, bonds and refunds, and thanks to Bill, and of course, Dave was there, and Stacy, I got Pat, you know, you guys were all there to do that, so you helped us with that, and Pam. We, we've had a good year, a lot of collaboration with all of our department heads, uh, working together, and that's the theme of what we do here in Mahoney County, is we work together. Projects that we have and that we roll out, we try to do them together, and so that everybody is on the same page and are equally given the kudos that they need, and, um, so I'm happy, I'm happy to be here with you two guys. I know I, we joke around and we tease a lot, but I have, honestly have to say that I've never worked with a group like this, ever, and I've been in government many, many, many years, and I've never worked with a group. We can actually sit at the table, fight, and we do do that. You don't see it, but we do. And then...
I don't remember any of those.
And come out, and we, we come up with a solution for Mahoney County that benefits the residents, you know, our employees, and everybody that's here. So that's good, you know, and then when we can't resolve it, we call Jerry and bring the police in. Or we bring Bob in to talk to us. Bob?
Usually we bring, we bring Bob in because he's been bad. That's the only time Bob comes in.
Poor Bob. I think it's the name, maybe, Bob. I'm, I'm used to saying Bob.
No, 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 it's, it's not the name, because the, the only bad name is, is your name, George.
Oh, geez. And that's what I was going to say, have a, have a star, I mean, we don't, strike that from the record, guys. Have a great holiday, you know, Christmas is next week, God bless everybody, be peaceful, you know, have a great, great holiday, be safe on the roads, don't drive and text and talk, and, and if you're going to be out having a little bit of a party, do not drive, just be safe, and God bless everybody.
Thanks, Carol.
Until the end of the month.
Leo Conley came in. Leo has represented disabled American veterans for a long time, and all the veterans, and Leo, welcome.
Hi, Commissioners, I had to come down here today, I've got a little bit of a good news, I'm still afraid, it's from Martin Luther King. I had a dream, I had a dream of a bridge being named the Women's Veteran Bridge, because of the women's contribution, especially like in Iraq and Afghanistan, I mean, when I went down and testified in Columbus, they were shocked at the numbers that I had, like there was two-hundred-and-eighty thousand women in that war in Afghanistan and Iraq. So I went down and testified, I got a call yesterday, which they've already put it on the news, it passed the House unanimously, headed to the Senate, uh, I don't, I mean, it'd be political suicide, turn this down, but, uh, I, I think it's going to pass. From my understanding, we have the second bridge in Ohio, I think it's in the nation, but I didn't do my due diligence on it. It's the second one in, uh, in Ohio, and it'll be in Mahoney County. As you come up Mahoney, going over Route eleven in Austintown, we're going to get that, the Women's Veteran Bridge, and so I wanted to come down here with that good news. Hopefully, hopefully, I accomplish that by the end of the year, I call the governor's office, and they're going to try to expedite it, if not, it definitely will be in January, and then it takes ninety days from when the governor signs, as you very well know, to become law. But that's something that the Valley could be proud of, to honor our women, long overdue, I thought, but, now, thank you, though, thank you for all your work.
That's amazing, you know, thank you. And, and you know what else, you know, for, to even get more specific, you know, Melanie Viano was in Desert Storm, Desert Shield, and she was one of our Austintown police officers who passed away.
Sure, yeah.
And, you know, so...
And Dave, when I did my testimony in Columbus, I went back as far as eighteen sixty-one, there was only one woman, Mrs. Walker, she was a surgeon, wasn't in the military, but she was a surgeon, and they'd give her the Medal of Honor, they took it back off of her, and then they give it back to the family in nineteen seventy-seven. So all those statistics, when I went down and testified, was, uh, like, you know, I, I had the, all the good answers behind me, and the chairman, I seen him on the hall after I got done, and he guaranteed me he would push this and make sure it got through. On another note, there was a couple of streets, one being named after Senator Harry Michelle, our good friend, and Mr. Watson, there'll be a street named after him. So that was bundled up into this package. So those are all good, uh, good news, I'm bringing them back to the Valley. And just, you know, I said, just another step the Valley does to give you a reason why you stay here.
Finally, finally, they're honoring the women, I mean, in the military.
Well, and then, that was part of my PEPD, when I did the research, I mean, they were throwing a license plate here and there, but I thought, they're not really given the same honor as a man, and I could tell you for a fact, there's eight women on the wall in Vietnam, and there's two still missing, so they played a part, you know, and, and they were in combat. When I was Commissioner at Mahoney County Veteran Services, I promoted Susan Drowinski, and she did twenty-five years Army, two tours in Iraq, combat tours, not secretarial tours, and was never recognized, you know, she was never, nobody ever knew, and now she's over there doing a phenomenal job for us with the veterans. So, yeah, you're going to be hearing more and more, especially from my mouth, about women, because they're going to get what they got coming. I, I feel the song overdue. Thank you, Commissioner.
Be involved at the Transitional Hazi for women that are trying to do it okay.
Well, that's another project, we're working on the homeless, for both men and women, they, and there's some grants out there, I'm just not educated enough to know how to go get that money, but I know that's out there, and I'll get it accomplished, it just going to take a little time. All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Leo. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to compliment Leo, I mean, nobody works harder for a better company than Leo. He's on Facebook more than, than anybody, and he's all over the state. I don't know how Doreen puts up with you, but she's a good lady, you're blessed.
She's a very bottom woman.
And, um, I just want to thank the Rollers for that cake, I'm sure I'm going to try to dive into that somehow today and take a bite of it, thank you very much. And, um, just, you know, have a blessed holiday, you know, I thank God every day for the blessings that I have, and, you know, there's other people who are not as fortunate as we are. So always this time of year, try to remember those who may come to you and say, "Hey, I need a little hand, I need this, I need that," which I normally usually get, and I give in, but, um, that's what we're about, that's what Mahoney County's about. And I appreciate the remarks Carol made, I've been there the longest of the commissioners, and I have, haven't worked with a better group of officials in my career than I have with this board here. And I consider it in my family, as well as my friends, and we're very blessed to have great officials, uh, very smart and intelligent staff people that make us all look good, something that I've always prided myself with. We have the best in Mahoney County, and I'm going to brag about that, because that's what I think it is. And Pam, going to miss you as well, best of luck to you. Jerry, thanks for having the big heart that you have to get that accomplished for your deputies, that speaks volumes about your character, so, proud to be part of it. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and happy Mahoney. Thank you.
Well, you know, I, I didn't want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't also say that, you know, it's, uh, last year's been tough for us with my mother, and, you know, I, uh, don't get me started about government, you know, government is so bad, it takes so long, it doesn't do anything it's supposed to do in most instances, and I, I talk state and federal, not local, you know, because local government, you could walk in the door, and talk to your trustees, your commissioners, your city mayors and things, and, and discuss issues, because, you know, what did they say, all politics are welcome?
Yeah, right.
You know, so, um, but, you know, dealing with Medicare, you know, my, my mother's in a wheelchair in bed, twelve hours in each situation, dementia, and Medicare turned down her hospital bed, turned down a wheel, turned down everything, you know, because, oh, she doesn't take any medication for respiratory, so we can't give her a hospital bed, you know, and it was just such all bullshit. And so when you talk about media and things that you do, I just posted on Facebook my, my disgruntledness, if that's a word, with the whole process, and who calls me ten minutes later? Leo Conley. "I got a hospital bed, come on over and get it, you can have it." You know, so, I went over, and Leo and Doreen, you know, uh, you know, we went over with a pickup truck, me and a buddy, and mine, and Leo, he's, you know, the, you know, one, one degree below Atlas, you know, the guy's, he's stronger than Ox. The only one I think is, is rival, so there was this deputy standing at the doorway, Jolly Green Giant. Anyway, Leo, I can't thank you enough, you know, you've got a great heart, you know, not just on behalf of veterans, but everyone. And, uh, your work for veterans is second to none, so, we thank you. And that's a great honor to see the, the bridge being named for the women in the military, the things that we do, and Anthony said it right, you know, and Carol's comments hit right on the head, it's, it's, it's just all about people, you know, that, that's what it's, what everything revolves around, is, is how we treat each other, and how we respect each other, and, you know, and how we do things on behalf of them, and the community, and the people we work with, and, you know, and we have an excellent staff and a lot of phenomenal elected officials, and I'm honored and proud to, to serve on the board with Carol and Anthony, and, you know, Pat's here, and Sheriff Green, and he won't let me call him Jerry anymore, he makes me call him Sheriff Green, so, but, you know, Sheriff Green and Pat, and, you know, just everyone, uh, does such a phenomenal job on behalf of the residents of Mahoney County, they have big hearts, and it's a fine balancing act, because, you know, we negotiate contracts with people who work on behalf of the taxpayers, and we serve at the, at the will of the taxpayers, you know, and, and you know that everyone that works so hard within the walls of the county government do an excellent job, and you, you want to make sure that you do the right thing on behalf of everyone, and it becomes a difficult balancing act to represent two-hundred-and-forty thousand residents as well as eighteen hundred employees. So you try to find that happy medium to make sure that you do the right thing. And I think we have a lot of elected officials that on a daily basis do the right thing, and you can't really ask for more than that, so, I thank all of you, and, you know, like we always talk, you know, the people in this room are, have a little bit more than most, you know, make sure you, you dig, you dig down deep and you do something, even if it's given of your time. I know I saw Sheriff Green working his butt off, and his whole family, and Thanksgiving, serving food, I don't know what we have this week in the holidays, and, you know, whether it's a rescue mission or what, but I'm sure there'll be a lot of us doing things that we can, or whatever we can. And if you have anything to give, really dig in your closet when you're off this week, you know, I, I know that there's a ton of things that we just keep pushing down the rack in the closet. Annie Hall over at the old fire station on four-twenty-two, she's looking for coats, there's so many people at the rescue mission, you know, if you go, you get out on the rescue mission in Youngstown, there's literally families that live there, there's not one person or one individual, there's families that live in a room that's as big as one of the cells that is at the jail, I mean, that's, that's how bad it is in some instances. So, you know, grab your clothes, dump them in your closet, or dump in your car, and when you're driving down, drop them off somewhere. Thank you for the catering.
Welcome.
Appreciate it. Merry Christmas, God bless you all, healthy New Year, and, uh, thank you for everything that you do for all of us. Is that, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner, remember that?
Yes.
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 Next meeting?
Next meeting, it is not next week, it is the twenty-eighth of December on Thursday, and all you ladies in red, get up and circle around Nancy, the picture's going to be taken right around Nancy.